Twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, Freeholders' meeting. We're going to start with our conference agenda. May we please have a round of applause?
Freeholders, Hottler, Bartlett, Best, Daffy, LaFleur, Deputy Director James, Director Lazare.
Here. We're going to start off with our Administrator's Report. And, uh, he is...
Uh, thank you, Director. Uh, we're going to go a little out of order and start with a presentation and a proclamation recognizing Steve Edmund, our esteemed engineer who's retiring after thirty-three years of service at the State County. Freeholder Best, who is the Chairman of the Public Works Committee, has a proclamation to read in the record. Steve, would you like to come up with your family?
Good evening, everyone. Um, very sad day for us, a sad time that Steve Edmund is going to be leaving us soon. After thirty-three years of service here to the County of Passaic, many of which have been as our county engineer. It's been a great privilege for myself, as well as all of the many freeholders that he served with over this time, including changes in government, to just have him there as a constant reminder of professionalism and dedication to the County of Passaic and what we really stand for. We had a chance to attend his retirement party, and at his retirement party, ooh, great job, by the way, we put it together. At his retirement party, we presented him with proclamation, and because it was getting a little late tonight, we didn't read everything, but we wanted to make sure that we read him into the record to make it official, so you should know that these thirty-three years he hasn't been sitting on his hands, twiddling his thumbs, being a freeholder for the County of Passaic. So, I wanted to read for the record some of Steve's many accomplishments. Whereas the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic has desired to recognize Steve J. Edmunds, who will be honored at the retirement celebration, which already happened, a great party. Whereas Mr. Edmunds earned a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Rutgers University, he is a New Jersey licensed professional engineer and professional planner, and he has been a member of the Association of County Engineers for many years. You know, somebody's old when they say many years. Whereas Mr. Edmunds joined the Passaic County Engineering Department in nineteen eighty-five, he has held the position of county engineer since February nineteen ninety. And whereas during his tenure as county engineer, he has overseen many significant improvements, and under his direction and supervision, the county has completed seven hundred million dollars in capital improvements, including the repair, the replacement, rehabilitation of ninety county bridges and culverts, thirty major county road improvements, and the construction of a police academy, public safety academy, a three-hundred-and-forty-bed previous healthcare center addition, renovations to the Di mansion, Lambert's Castle, and Lambert's Tower, the stabilization and beautification of Gothelbrook Park, Gothelbrook Park Synthetic Turf Field, Weaselbrook Park, and Garrett Mountain improvements, the improvements to the Passaic Valley Golf Course, including the irrigation pond, pump house, and pathways, the improvements to the Passaic County Jail, and the courthouse annex renovations. And, whereas Mr. Edmunds received a certificate of special congressional recognition for outstanding and invaluable service to the community, the New Jersey Historic Preservation Award for the Straight Street Bridge, a certification of appreciation from the borough of Pomtham Lakes, and recognition of civic meritorious service to the borough during the spring floods in two thousand and five, a certification of appreciation and administrative service in the preservation and rehabilitation of the West Broadway Bridge in two thousand and nine, top-ten road award for the Greenwood Lake Turnpike, the two thousand and nine Two Bridge Award for Hillary Street Bridge, and Award of Engineering Excellence for the West Broadway Bridge. The Hillary Street Bridge and West Broadway Bridge from the American Council of Engineering Companies of New Jersey, the New Jersey Alliance for Action Awards, the American Society for Civil Engineer, Government Engineer of the Year in two thousand and twelve, the New Jersey Historic Preservation Award for Day Mansion, excuse me, Di mansion, the Napa Quality Award for Road Resurfacing, and the New Jersey Alliance for Action Distinguished Engineering Award for the Patterson-Hamberd Turnpike Improvements. And, whereas the Board wishes to express its gratitude and appreciation to Steve Edmunds for recognizing him for his genuine interest and concern for the well-being of the citizens of Passaic County. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic that it publicly extends its sincere congratulations to Mr. Edmunds as a fitting tribute to him for the significant contributions he has made, an exemplary service he has dedicated to the citizens of the County of Passaic, and be it further proclaimed that this Board wishes Steve Edmunds continued health, success, and happiness. And this is signed by all seven freeholders. Thank you, Steve, so much, all of you.
Thank you. I wish to thank the Freeholders, the Chairman and Administrator for all the support and allowing me to serve as a county engineer. That has really been a truly rewarding experience working here, both professionally and personally. But I must say, all those accolades that are in that proclamation, I didn't do. That's really my engineering staff that did all the work. They're a very hard work and a dedicated group, I wish to thank them for all their services.
Can we get a picture?
No.
Can't you see that? Come on, get in there, come on. Jordan?
Everybody.
All right, now, if you don't get them all, we're going to... Ready, guys? One, two, three. Okay, we're good. Thank you. Congratulations. I know what we're going to do with those things, sound... Yeah. Congratulations. Bye-bye. Steve, I know the Administrator's very upset to have him the obligation to be here tonight, but he wanted me to convey to you thanks for your service. You know, we're all going to miss you. I know in my few years working with you, I've learned a lot, we butted heads a lot, but you really are a role model for what a public servant should be. You know, I thank you again for your service. Right, Director, now, when may, I'm going to turn the program over to Freeholder Bartlett for our celebration of Asian Pacific American Heritage Month in the County of Passaic.
Thank you very much. Good evening, and welcome. Thank you very much for being here. It is remarkable to realize that this is now our sixth year celebrating the Asian Pacific American Communities of Passaic County. And I'm so glad that among so many others we have here tonight, we have one of our very first honorees from 2013, Ansarji Ansarakulaykumari. When I heard your story told to me, Ansarji, it reflected the story that I know from my father-in-law and that I know from so many others of being one of the first in a community and being part of building it simply by being the person that one can go to. Bengali arriving in Patterson in the late nineteen seventies, did not have nearly as many people as called, did not have a member of the city council that looked like him, and Councilman Shahin Kalik, thank you very much for being here, as well as Councilman Anand Shah from Prospect Park. It was people like yourself that were the beginning of growing the community. And I have above me and around us today this slideshow that we do each year as part of Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, and every year it gets longer. And in fact, if you think about just in the six years that Passaic County has been celebrated Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, of course, the Asian Pacific American story goes back much further. Nationally, it goes back hundreds of years. Here in New Jersey, it goes back sixty-plus years. But the fact that we now talk of many mayors and many council members and three different freeholders across the state of New Jersey, from the Asian American Communities, is really something exceptional. And it's something that I think we in New Jersey should be very proud of, because we are really on the cutting edge. We've always been among the leaders in raising up those individuals from the many communities that we have. And on that note, actually, and to get us started, I want to acknowledge one of my colleagues from far away, Freeholder Balbir Singh is with us from Burlington County. Balbir, come on up. And first of all, thank you for coming, but more than that, congratulations on your election last year. We now have, as I mentioned, three freeholders, one north, one central, one south Jersey, one Hindu, one Muslim, you're the southern, one Hindu, one Muslim, one Sikh. It is about as unexpected and remarkable a consequence as you could have when you look across just the freeholders that we have around the state of New Jersey. But I'm so glad that you drove up in spite of the weather to be part of our program here, and it's really my privilege to just ask you to say hello and introduce yourself and talk a little bit about how this process and this month is for someone like yourself, an elected official.
Well, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and Freeholder Board, honoring guests. Good evening. Of course, I extend the greetings from Burlington County and Mariposa County, all the way in the bottom. I think I have a two-hour ride from here, I'll depend on the traffic, and our Freeholder Board. I'm a teacher of public school, eleven years into service, and my parents, the first time I get to college myself, my mom went to fifth grade up to that point, and my father went up to seventh grade before I halfway yet to get out for farming. And to see myself here, I feel, you know, I'm privileged and honored to be in this state and in this country, and to get on this remarkable journey. And here we are, eleven years of public school teaching, and now on the Freeholder Board. So I am, you know, I do not take it lightly, and I really commend you for having this event here to recognize the contributions of the Asian community into the state of New Jersey and our wider community as Americans. So, thank you very much for having me.
Before we continue, I realize one of the things that I was going to have Balbir do, but I think that we could all do, actually. Councilman, Councilman, why don't you join me up here as well? Let's just begin with a flag salute, and then we'll continue the program. I'm sure you... Oh, there, come on up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So, a wonderful flag to say to the pledge of allegiance to, some beautiful additional flaggings here. It is such a remarkable range of cultures and communities that are part of the Asian Pacific American community, and it's something that we as freeholders and the Passaic County Government are always trying to be responsive to. I'm very happy to say that over the course of the last several years, we have for the very first time started putting information about social services out in the Bengali language, so that language is not a barrier for immigrant communities to access information that they need. And for my team back there, that were also putting information out in the Gujarati language, I sit on NJTPA, Fleet, yeah, applaud the Gujaratis. I sit on NJTPA, which is a regional transportation board, and they have a pedestrian safety campaign, and I certainly know, just in my neighborhood, in driving around, we'll see aunties and uncles, you all know what I mean when I say aunties and uncles, out on their constitutionals, and realizing that a simpler thing as looking right and not left is an important part. So the fact that we're doing that and making that available to immigrant communities is something I think is very, very important. Someone who really has embodied a lot of making government and public service ready for the diversity that comes with inner communities like this one, but particularly in the area of education, is Professor Kiyati Joshi, who most of you know as my wife. Kiyati, come on up. So, this year's theme... This year's theme is a celebration of Asian Pacific Americans in education, and it's a topic I probably know more about than you would expect, looking at me. But I owe that entirely to Kiyati, whose life's work has been particularly working with teachers and working in classrooms to make them places where kids of all kinds of backgrounds can thrive, and in particular, to make sure that, I won't say our community, because I do kind of feel like it's our community, to make sure that when you're talking about growing up South Asian, growing up East Asian, growing up Super Muslim or Hindu in the United States of America, it is as easy as it is for the rest of us. So, it's a privilege, actually, silly, here as a freeholder, we're married, but it's a privilege on behalf of the freeholders to have you talk about why all of this is so important.
Thank you for having me. Not that I had much of a choice when he asked, but here I am. I'm so delighted and was really thrilled, six years ago, when John said, you know, we should celebrate Asian Pacific Heritage Month. It really is important. It's really important for kids in school and kids just around to know that people outside of their community like that they're there, that want them there, that celebrate where they come from, because that makes them feel more a part of where they are. So it's a really, really important thing we all do, that all y'all do. And, you know, we have February for African American Heritage Month, we have March for Women's History. If you've ever wondered why May is Asian Pacific Heritage Month, it actually goes back to when the Transcontinental Railroad was completed, I believe in eighteen sixty-nine. It was completed in May tenth, and so that is why the month was chosen, to celebrate Asian Pacific Heritage Month. Someone in education, as educators are being honored, I wanted to take a couple of minutes to just explain a few things that I think really does impact all children's education, actually, in the United States, and that is the development of stereotypes that come to me, specifically when they come to me because of laws that our Congress passed, or because of immigration policy, for example. So, working with teachers and principals around New Jersey and beyond, one of the things I always hear is that, "I love my Asian kids. I love my Asian American kids. You know, they don't cause rakkas, they do what they're told, they work hard, and they do really well." And I, in one sense, am delighted to hear that, but in another sense, so many people are working on stereotypes that all Asian and Asian American kids do well and have the same kinds of resources. And I want to explain how this stereotype came to be, because the truth of the matter is stereotypes for everybody. And so sometimes this is seen as a positive stereotype, but in actuality, it really does cause a lot of harm. A lot of Asian American kids face undue pressure. The suicide rate in college for Asian Pacific Americans is higher than it should be, let's put it that way. So I wanted to kind of explain this, because partially this is also, it helps everyone understand, because even our own communities don't necessarily have this information. So one of the reasons, if we had gone back to the Chinese-American, the Chinese who were here that built the Transcontinental Railroad, and the other Asian groups that were here, they were really considered dirty. They were considered, you know, we need to keep away from them. They were, many of them were not Christian, so they were seen as less than. And indeed, we were happy, being in the United States, was happy that the Chinese built the railroads and the other Asian groups came to work in the agricultural industry in California, but then we were kind of like, okay, you know, y'all are done, you can go back now. And whereas we didn't deport folks, what folks did, what Congress did do in eighteen eighty-two is pass the Chinese Exclusion Act, a very, very important piece of legislation that still has ramifications today, because the legal architecture for immigration law was put in place then. So in eighteen eighty-two, we said, okay, no more Chinese folks coming. And then there were other things that happened also. So, and I won't get into other details, because this is, I need to keep it brief, but everything changes, and there were a few other immigration laws passed that kept out other groups, other Asians, as well as then people from Southern and Eastern Europe. But then in nineteen sixty-five, everything changed. And in nineteen sixty-five, our doors were opened, and you might say, well, why were they opened? And they were opened because we, President Kennedy got the ball rolling. He had started NASA, and we needed engineers to help with NASA. And at the time, India and China were allied with the former Soviet Union, so we opened our doors. We actually opened our doors to everybody around the world, although there was a huge asterisk, is what I tell my students. The asterisk was, you had to be an engineer, a PhD, an MD, or a nurse, or someone else, essentially with a master's degree in science and engineering, because that's who our country needed. That was the driving force. We had been in Korea, we were about to go into Vietnam, and Medicare and Medicaid were starting up, and we had a shortage of medical personnel. This is indeed my family immigration story. My father is a physician and was brought here by Penn State, you know? My parents had an arranged marriage, which won't surprise many of you, and my mom, she had no idea when she agreed to marry my dad, that she was going to have to come to America. Maybe that is the case for some of you here, I don't know, but it's kind of turned into a joke in our family. So what happened was, is that my dad could come. My dad's youngest brother, chemical engineer, he could come. My dad's middle brother, college dropout, couldn't come. Couldn't come, okay? And this essentially drove the population that came. So in nineteen sixty-seven, US News and World Report wrote an article and termed Asians as the model minority. And this has been an issue for race relations in America ever since, because we are seen as if there's something in the blood, as if something's in the culture, and that's just not the case. It's about who was allowed to come. It's about who was allowed to come. It's immigration preferences, visa preferences, as I know that phrase is familiar to many people in this room, right? And then later, our preferences changed. So in nineteen ninety, our preferences changed to family reunification, which is how aunts and uncles and cousins and everybody got here, right? As well as other folks who were coming in that the United States needed, business people came in the eighties. In the late nineties, we seen the tech workers come. So I think this is really important, because immigration policy developed this stereotype, and that impacts education and how students receive help, don't receive help. So I just kind of wanted to put this out there, you know, as someone in education, also who deals with immigration policy, because I think it's really important to understand teachers, we all need to have high expectations of kids, but for the right reasons, not for stereotypes, just like we don't need to have low expectations for stereotypical reasons either, you know? So, to me, this is really, really significant, because this is American history, this is our history, and it really shows, actually, New Jersey's, you know, Asians first came to New Jersey, South Asians specifically first came to New Jersey in the eighteen eighties to Asbury Park. That's where we have documentation, where they were in Asbury Park. So I really, I'm a real proud naturalized citizen, and those of you who know me, know I'm very proud of my Indian ancestry, and I think that what I appreciate so much about Passaic County is that the freeholders and so many of our other government representatives truly appreciate us. Thank you.
See why I'm married, huh? Thank you, Kiyati, so, so much for that. It's my privilege to begin now the presentation of the honorees, and I wanted to ask Director Lazare, would you join me? We're joined by both a college scholar and a high school teacher who are here with us today, and we're going to begin by recognizing Dr. Shital Rajan. Shital, come on up and join me.
Congratulations. So I have the honor of reading this proclamation, and you're going to be astounded by everything you've done, and you're really young, too. Young. I don't know. For you, it was accomplished quite a bit. Whereas the month of May has been designated as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made to the United States by immigrants from Asia and Pacific Islands and descendants, the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic needs to be fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Shital Rajan. And, whereas Dr. Shital Rajan earned her BA in English Literature and MA in Criminology from the University of Madras in Chennai, India, a GISC certificate in Geographic Information Science from Lehman College, CUNY, and her Master's of Philosophy and PhD in Criminal Justice from the Graduate Center, City University of New York. And whereas, Shital Rajan is presently an Associate Professor in the Department of Sociology at William Patterson University, who she has directed initiatives and research projects on campus violence and violence against women supported by more than six hundred thousand dollars in grant funding from the US Department of Justice and from WPU itself. And earlier in her career, was also a research associate with numerous distinguished faculty members at the John Judge of Criminal Justice in New York. And whereas, Dr. Rajan serves as a Secretary of the New Jersey Study Commission on Violence, as a trustee of Burn Community College, as Chair of Division of Women and Crime of the American Society of Criminology, and as a member of the Diversity Committee of the Association of Community College Trustees. And, and she served on the education and was a member of the Access and Opportunity Transition Advisory Committee of New Jersey Governor-elect Phil Murphy in two thousand seventeen. And whereas, Shital Rajan is a recipient of many honors and awards, she was a project director for grants, she is an author, a teacher, a mentor, and has provided training and workshops and revised and developed courses and programs at William Patterson University, and she has made academic presentations and served on various task forces at the university. Now, therefore, being proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Shital Rajan for the significant contribution she has made and the exemplary service she has devoted to the community, and being further proclaimed, that this Board extends its sincerest best wishes to Shital Rajan for continued success. I told you, she's quite an accomplished woman.
Good evening. Thank you, freeholders. Thank you, John, for having me call me, and thanks to all being the community members here. Thank you, Freeholder Lazare, for dealing it so well. Well, yes, it is a law that she has read out, and none of that could have happened without the support of the family, which you know is the essential building block of what we do. And one of the things, I just want to use this platform to put this out there, one of the things, we've created everything, okay? Let's just put it out there. We work very hard, we're...
director for grants, she is an author, a teacher, a mentor, and has provided training and workshops and revised and developed courses and programs at William Patterson University. And she has made academic presentations and served on various task forces at the university. Now therefore being proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Shital Rajan for the significant contribution she has made and the exemplary service she has devoted to the community, and being further proclaimed that this board extends its sincerest best wishes to Shital Rajan for continued success. I told you, she's quite an accomplished woman.
Good evening, thank you, freeholders, thank you, John, personally even called me, and thanks to all being the community members here, to freeholder Lazaro for dealing it so well. Well, yes, it is a lot that she has read out, and none of that could have happened without the support of the family, which you know is the essential building block of what we do. And one of the things, I just wanna use this platform to put this out there, one of the things, we great at everything, okay, let's just put it out there. We work very hard, we're excellent, but one of the weaknesses of our community is the unwillingness to come out into public service, is the unwillingness to take on leadership roles, the unwillingness to say, okay, you know, I wanna put myself out there, I wanna stand out, and I want to, you know, do this for the community. I mean, we do, we do a lot of donations, we, you know, do a lot of things, but we're not willing to stand up out there, we don't encourage it. We still want our doctors, our children to become doctors and engineers. And if, you know, one of our kids says, oh, they wanna be a political, you know, they wanna be in politics, you kind of wonder, really? So that, that kind of needs to change. It has happened more recently in New Jersey's past, but I think more and more has to happen in that state. And I have to say, I'm a, you know, I'm a culprit of that. When I was nominated for the Division of Women and Crime of the American Society of Criminology, which is one of the most largest international professional societies for criminology across the world, my thing was, oh, do I really wanna do this? Would I have the time? And then it thought, it occurred to me, I just went up the website, looked out, and I saw no other Asian American has ever done it. I just felt a responsibility to take on that additional load of work that you see listed here, is every time I feel the responsibility, I want more of you to take on that, please. And I just wanna thank you guys for that. Thank you.
So stick, stick around, in a couple minutes, we're gonna take a picture with both of the honorees, and of course, everyone, please stick around, yeah, have a seat, for our buffet dinner downstairs in the rotunda, a highlight of every year, if I do say so myself. Be sure to leave some for me, I've gotta stay up here with the team, as Assad does as well, to do our freeholder business meeting, so don't take every last bit of na, but have at it, have some fun. I'm actually gonna pass the program over to my colleague, Assad Doctor, who is one of those three freeholders that I talked about earlier on, that are really blazing new ground here in New Jersey, and certainly Assad is, what's a year and a half now so far? Okay, two campaigns in two years, that's the hard part. Has really, has become an exceptional part of this board, and I know you're eager to present the second proclamation and then close this out.
Can I, can I call up Dr. Buridhadeen, please? First of all, I apologize for being late. My very Asian-American little baby daughter needed her Asian-American grandparents to come and watch us, so, but, but I'm very proud to be here and recognize my good brother here. Whereas the month of May has been designated as Asia-Pacific American Heritage Month in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made to the United States by immigrants from Asia and Pacific Islands and descendants, the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic deemed it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Buridhadeen. And whereas Mohammed Buridhadeen was born in Bangladesh, where he was raised listening and speaking both English and Bengali, moved to the United States in 2009, and then returned to Bangladesh to complete his bachelor's degree, and by his involvement with the British Council and American Corner of Bangladesh, he fostered a passion to learn about different nations and their cultures. And whereas Buridhadeen earned his Bachelor of Arts degree in English Literature in 2010, and his English as a Second Language Teaching Certificate in 2013, and he subsequently earned a master's degree in Urban Education at New Jersey City University. And whereas Buridhadeen has been working as a full-time English as a Second Language teacher at John F. Kennedy Educational Complex since April of 2014. And whereas Buridhadeen is the founder of the Scholars at On Clay Tutoring Center, whose program curricula have been designed by education experts to help students excel at school, master their exam, and gain acceptance at top schools and colleges. And whereas he's an English instructor for the New Jersey Community Development Corporation Complete for Life Program, advisor at John F. Kennedy Education Complex for Rotary International, their sponsored interact club, and education coordinator for the New Jersey Help Center, and advisor for Guys with Ties at the School of Education and Training Organization. Now therefore being proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic that it hereby recognizes and applauds Mohammed Buridhadeen for the significant contributions he's made, the exemplary service he has devoted to the community, and being further proclaimed that this board extends its sincere best wishes to him for continued success. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you for that very generous introduction. I'm pleased and honored and humbled for this proclamation. Thank you, Passaic County Board of Freeholders, for this honor, and it is, it makes me feel great, I'm being recognized for the hard work that one does. I'm grateful to my family, friends, and community members, who have always been with me and supporting me. And of course, thank you to my siblings who are here today, for my 24/7 volunteers whenever I need, and my family and friends, thank you for your support, and thank you for being here this evening. Thank you. It is a pleasure to witness this wonderful moment in the presence of you all. Thank you for being here, thank you. On stage, it is me who was taking this recognition, but on the back end, there are so many other people who, who put their effort and made me not able to come here and take this recognition. Especially, I would like to thank my volunteer staffs and my awesome students from Patterson Public Schools. I can't thank them enough. Just to give you a little perspective on my life, and teaching, and, and community service, let me take you back to many years ago, when I was a middle school student. I remember my elder brothers who had started a tutoring program, free tutoring program for the students who are not able to pay a tutor for their extra help. From that time, I started, I, my mentality was, you know, going for teaching and community. And consequently, I was involved with many volunteering activities in Bangladesh with Rites and Society, American Corner, and British Councils. But at that time, volunteering was just something that I had enjoyed, nothing more than that. Real journey started in 2011, when I had just moved in in the United States, was working on my masters, and teaching certifications, and was, just started working at Patterson Public Schools. In 2012-2013 school year, I was assigned to teach adult ESAL program at School Five, however, the program was led by adult high school. I had about 50-plus parents in that program. Unfortunately, in the middle of the program, I had to leave. I had to go to Passaic High School for my internship. That was January 2013, middle of the school year. It was Monday morning, I got a text from a good friend of mine and a colleague, Kilman Chowdhury, many of you may know him well. He texted me, hey, Free, your ESAL parents are in School Five office, they're screaming and yelling at the principal, thinking that, that you got fired. I was, I was just laughing and was thinking how much they love me. At night, around 8:00, I got a phone call from a parent, had my cell phone, saying, hey, Mr. Dean, we have seniorship exam next month, we need your help. I could not say anything, I just, I just dabbled my tears. From that time, I determined to work with this community, and I'm here today. So the real journey started on that day. I started talking with many nonprofit organizations and started offering free seniorship and ESAL passes. In 2014, I started my job as a teacher at Kennedy High School at Set Academy, where I met an excellent and amazing principal, Ms. Florida, with our help and assistance. We formed a club which is called Guys with Ties. Our mission was to develop our students personally and professionally, and connect them with their communities and make them better citizens, and the program still running well. In 2016, we have added another club to our academy, which is Inter Club, sponsored by Rotary International, where our kids participate in many volunteering activities and the activities that strengthen their leadership skills. In 2017, in regard to deliver the light of modern education, I established, with the help of my community members, my family, my friends, I started a tutoring center which is called On Clay with nominal structure. And this year, voluntarily, we are able to assist 25 of our high school seniors with their college applications, TAFSA, and many scholarship applications, those who are set for two and/or four-year colleges. Recently, we assisted with our assistance of other members from a nonprofit organization which is X, stands for A Commitment to Serve. Currently, we are working on our very first project, which is we are collecting books and sending overseas to the schools where there is no library for the school. And we are planning to work with our students in this summer, in regard to improve their vocabulary, we are planning to have a spelling competition in this summer, and I'll try to reach you guys out, if you guys can attend there. So thank you, thank you, I told all this, the story is a long story, just to, just to tell you indirectly or directly, that we need to invest our little time for our people. This recognition is a token to me, to my team, for the efforts we have done and for the push factors for the future activities. Thank you, each and one of you, that made this evening so special and memorable for me, and for my family, and for my community, and for my team, my volunteers, my students, and my school. My sincere thanks to Passaic County Board of Freeholders. Thank you, and enjoy the rest of the evening.
Thank you very much. I feel very proud to be here, to the recognition of one of our key, one of my relatives. I remember that five years ago in this room, the chosen freeholder, it would not be in 35, it's a community activity for 35 years. So our chosen freeholders, they are elected to serve for us. After their duty, they're doing something, the community, the value of the person can recognize his activities that they award. So I'm very appreciative to them, and I feel proud for this certification. I give this certification in my living memorial, and I, when I went Bangladesh, I carried over one certification. Friend of mine, the council at large, councilwoman, I told the marisa I need one for the frame. So she presented me exactly this, and I will carry it to my Bangladesh and stay in that my living. So thank you, our representative, the new order, for your recognition, and you buried the planting of residence of Passaic County, freeholder for Passaic County. Thank you, thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody, it's my honor to close out the program here. Again, I'm sorry that I missed the early part of this presentation, but it is incredible the honorees that we have today, the, the audience of people who are here, and the representation from so many different fields and so many different accomplishments that are here. You know, it was my honor to be the first Asian-American freeholder in Passaic County history, but I'm grateful that even before I got here, that John Bartlett was carrying the torch for this cause and for this community for so long. Could we give John a round of applause? He offered me to let me take over the program, I said, John, I can't do better than you in terms of doing this properly and recognizing all the different communities that we have, we're lucky to have in Passaic County. And I also wanna recognize, I'm sure it was recognized earlier, but my colleague from a different freeholder board, Freeholder Baldur Singh, came all the way up here from the county, thank you so much. I was Shanti Narasen, who was the other freeholder of Passaic County, beat me by two weeks to be the first Asian-American freeholder in New Jersey. So, yeah, so, it happens, it happens. But, but, listen, I don't want to take too much time, I know people wanna get to the food and everything, but I just wanna say, when I was growing up in the state, New Jersey, being an Asian-American growing up, some, a night like tonight, the people who were here tonight, elected officials, educators, people in all different fields, I've walked the life, different industries, a night like tonight was unthinkable. You know, my mother, when she went, I told her before, when she went to her first PTA meeting one night, was in elementary school, she told me, you know, I don't wanna ever go back again because of the way people lived in New Jersey to be there. And that was also because nobody in the administration or any of the teachers looked like us or felt like us. And so now I'm grateful, since we're honorary educators, that there are people at all levels, at a grade school level, elementary, all the way up to higher education, who look like us and look like our country, and that's very necessary and needed. But I just wanna close on this. Everybody who is here, you know, every immigrant community has a different story, that's an Asian community, but every immigrant community has a different story. immigrant, but every immigrant community has a different story, and they came at different times, the history of this country, from the earliest years of this country to the most recent. We, everybody in communities from a reason. As Asian Americans, especially South Asian Americans, many of the people who immigrated here, in large numbers immigrated in the last 20, 30 or so years, in the last few generations. We know the generation that immigrated here and that came here. So, everybody here knows if they were either born here or brought here, or they themselves were the prime person immigrating to this country, they know what that, felt that what that means. So, I want to say that I am so grateful to the generation, my parents, and the generation that is represented here, the elders who put up all their lives and sacrificed everything they had and took effort. You know, we talk about the big milestones in my life, marriage, children, these kinds of things. You did all that, and you did it halfway across the world from where you grew up and everything you knew, and so I want to give a big round of applause to the generation that came here and supported immigrants. Thank you so much.[660.12][660.12][applause] We have a president who unfortunately denigrates our immigrants and our immigrant classes and people, and makes it seem as if every immigrant who comes to this country is only looking to take advantage. Well, they are only, every immigrant who came here, not every immigrant came here the same. That's been the case since the beginning. Some people come here and they already have higher education, they have higher degrees. Some people come uneducated. Some people come here and they leave more back where they came from. They were wealthier where they came from than they are here. They come here in poverty. Others come here in poverty and work their way up. Everybody has a different story, a different time, but what I do know is that no immigrant comes here to steal anything. They work hard, and they work hard to get the opportunities they have and to build their generations, and that has been the case for Asian immigrants, as it was for the European immigrants that came long before them. That is the American story, and I am so grateful that this room looks like the State County and looks like America. Thank you so much.[720.12][720.12][applause] And for those of you who are breaking the fast later, take some home.[732.41][732.41][laughter]
Have a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Freeholders, Arthur, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaBour, Deputy Director James, Director Lozare.
Have the motion to adjourn. James and Arthur.
Freeholders, Arthur, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaBour, Deputy Director James, Director Lozare.
Okay, can we have an announcement of the open public meeting law?
Ladies and gentlemen, notice requirement of the open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including the annual notice adopted of reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk posted in the administration building, mailed to two newspapers and courts, but the provision is a little off.
Roll call.
Freeholders, Arthur, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaBour, Deputy Director James, Director Lozare. Oh God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love, be gracious enough so to bless thy servants, our freeholders, in this county of the same, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a moment, silence for everyone, the men and women who have died while serving in the United States Armed Forces and the families in Texas who have lived through such harm.
If you don't mind, Director, the poor tragedy that happened in the school bus as well, just keep that in mind as well.
Have a motion to approve the minutes of May 2018.
So moved.
Best and Duffy.
Freeholders, Arthur, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaBour, Deputy Director James, Director Lozare.
Yes. Have a motion to be approved with proclamations.
Good.
That was Bartlett and, and Freeholder Duffy.
Freeholders, Arthur, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaBour, Deputy Director James, Director Lozare.
Director, can we just, because the recording wasn't working, can we just mention what the meeting is today? It's May 22nd. May 22nd.
Sure. This is State County Board of Chosen Freeholders, May 22nd, 2018, meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Freeholder reports. I guess I can start off. June 2nd, the county will be in conjunction with the Sheriff's Department and the Passaic County Education Associations, holding a gun violence awareness rally right outside in the Courthouse Plaza at 3 o'clock. We invite you all to attend. I think it's something that our voices need to be heard. We need to initiate change, not only in New Jersey, but I think throughout the country, and this is going to be a rally to save the lives of our kids and the men and women who live here. So, I invite you all to come June 2nd. It's a Saturday. Do I have to, James? 3 o'clock. Thank you. White House Plaza.
I'll say, we just said sorry.
Oh, okay. Freeholder, Arthur.
I have a question. Except to second what you said, Director, and I thank you for your leadership on this issue because it is incredibly scary, and if anyone thinks that you blow schools or any of our children are any less danger, unfortunately, that's not the case, and it's a very scary thought.
So scary. Freeholder, Bartlett.
Just to thank all my colleagues for being part of Asian American Heritage Month again, and for everyone who began observing our last week. Best wishes for an easy pass despite the long day, and a terrific month. That's all.
Freeholder, Best.
All's well.
Freeholder, Duffy.
Yes, just to remind everyone, it's a which received on, just to give you tickets. And we're out there, as I'm announcing, and also other towns that my colleague over there with great celebration, pleasure.
Who's the kids?
There's somebody, you know, and I've traveled down a little bit, but Freeholder, Arthur, the same thing, that trend of how you come over here, also my relatives from Iowa and somebody come over here in the same towns, but it was very well done, very, very wonderful. Pleasure.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. I'm going to congratulate a little business, a frequent, Duffy, which recently has seen their face and is tremendous. So, if you ever get a chance, is Duffy the first?
Duffy's first at River Street, 7th.[1174.12][1174.12][laughter]
What he meant to say about his family, he meant to say our family.
Orphan.[1183.35][1183.35][laughter] All right. Cousin, cousin, definitely.
Okay, and Freeholder, LaBour.
I can't follow that progress.[1194.12][1194.12][laughter]
Okay, so, because Freeholder, LaBour is making me do it, we wanted to just acknowledge the work of one of our department heads, Kenny Simpson, from Roads and Bridges, who just convened all of the county DPW directors to come to Labor's Castle to have a meeting, to, you know, just all get on the same page. We talked about a lot of the opportunities that we have for shared services. We acknowledge the hard work that they've been doing, as well as open our doors in the county for any ongoing or new partnerships. We had a chance for them to all greet and say farewell to our county engineer, Steve Evans. They wished him a well do, and we just wanted to commend Kenny for putting that together and convening it. I think it was a great opportunity. I would also like to see other departments possibly do this as well. I really think it was some good exchange of information, so for you guys out there, think about it.
That's great, thanks. And you know what, Kenny, I have to say how proud I am that you reached out to the city of Patterson and helped them learn a new strategy for filling potholes and paving that. And you know what, it's when we help each other, we have that collaboration that we really make great strides, and I commend you for that.
We're helping them right now, as we speak.
Can they do a mic screen? [laughter]
That was really great, though. Okay, have a motion to move the communications.
Second.
So, that was James and Arthur.
Freeholders, Bart, Freeholders, Arthur, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaBour, Deputy Director James, Director Lozare.
Yes. Have a motion to open the public portion of the meeting.
Go ahead. Take it.
That was Duffy and LaBour.
Freeholders, Arthur, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaBour, Deputy Director James, Director Lozare.
Yes. Just a reminder, please state your name and address, and you have three minutes after
And should I number two six eight one two command with the New Jersey?
Yeah. Unfortunately, I only have two of the longer ones. I will forward them through email. First of all, I'm here tonight representing Rutherford Camp Park Coalition, and I have a question for all of you tonight here. Have you ever been stressed out? Has anyone been stressed out or experienced a rough patch in your life? And I guess all of us here can say yes. I'm here tonight to let you know that here in Lower Passaic County, one of the best places to go to experience peace and refreshment is nearby Rutherford Camp Park and Garrett Mountain Reservation. One of the meditative activity that we don't have a lot of here is, that many people find helpful, is a labyrinth, walking a labyrinth. It's kind of a maze-like path. It allows for meditative and healing activity that people find helpful. I have some fires there for you, just some articles there on that, and probably a proposal will follow. There's a lovely area at Rutherford Camp Park that would be an excellent location for this kind of amenity, meditation trail leading to a labyrinth. As you know, Rutherford Camp Park is the last remaining parcel of natural open space left here in Lower Passaic County, a haven for residents seeking quiet passive activities in a quiet, natural setting, such as hiking and exercise, but it's also one of the best locations for promoting mental health that we have. It's enjoyed by seniors, nature lovers, veterans, those suffering with various disabilities, people with special needs such as autism and ADHD, as well as people seeking respite from the hustle and stress of everyday life. So, I've also included a couple of writings by Professor Gasko. She's a doctor, professor at William Patterson University, and these are some of her writings that exemplify the need for this kind of a peaceful and spiritual retreat for our parks and that our parks, Garrett, up at Garrett Mountain provide. I'll follow that with an email so everybody gets those. And now, just for myself, I'd like to speak about something, speak about stress. I recently had the experience, or my friend had the, I want to say too, this green infrastructure, great, glad to see this, need more of it, step in the right direction, excited about that meeting. I recently had a friend who was driving down Route 4 towards Patterson, saw a state of New Jersey DOT pesticide truck, not county, state DOT, casually spraying what is probably round up along the curb side where people were walking and standing at bus stops. They were spraying people, all with no regard for their health or safety. Unfortunately, she did not get a photograph. This led me to finding an article that people up in West Milford were concerned about the county spraying pesticide, probably round up a known carcinogen around the reservoir areas, and I'm also concerned about that around our rivers and things that affect our water supply. And I was wondering if tonight, if you could answer me that the county could address this issue, especially in those locations of water safety. Is that being addressed, that we can find an alternative, there's integrated investment, that we can find something for that? So, that's it. Thank you.
I'm Paula Coyle of Brown Brown, 56, Livingston Avenue, Roseland, New Jersey. We currently serve the county of Passaic as a broker record for the Employee Benefits Program. We've held this position successfully for over 14 years. Yesterday, we were advised that the county intended to appoint Keith Furlong of Fairview Associates, also in Passaic County and Polay, as broker record effective June 1st, 2018. Keith Furlong, as I mentioned, is currently an employee of the county. He's the Public Relations Representative for Passaic County, the Freeholders, and the spokesperson, spokesperson for the Passaic County Democratic Committee. This is obviously a conflict. Keith Furlong is listed on Fairview Associates website, fairviewinsurance.com. If you want to see his contact information as an employee, you should probably look this evening. We requested the Freeholders explore this relationship prior to approving a resolution that would appoint Keith Furlong and/or Fairview Associates as the Passaic County Employee Benefits Broker. Brown and Brown has successfully again served Passaic County for over 14 years. Recently, we recovered over $7 million in stop loss payables for the county, moved 22% of active employees into a more cost-effective health benefit program, supported the county with annual marketing, budget preparation, RDS administration, Chapter 78 contributions and calculations, annual employee education and union meetings. We've performed Gatsby, RDS actuarial services, wellness services, ACA, federal and New Jersey State Reclaim Services. In addition, the difference between our fee and Fairview's fee was nominal, and I believe it was not even, it was 1.16th of a percent. It was a very nominal difference in our annual request effective June 1st, 2018. Anyway, thank you all very much for considering our request to look into this a little bit further, and thank you for being such a loyal client over the last 14 years.
Good evening. Michael Graham, 685 Alamo Montclair, I am the Chief Operating Officer of Fairview Insurance. I want to thank you for the opportunity to have a firm speed today. I just want to say, while we respect the accomplishments of our competitors, as outlined in our proposal, we have equally outstanding accomplishments, and we work with an equally impressive client list. And we would like to say that we reviewed our proposal with our attorneys, we found no conflicts, we won a competitive bid because we're a highly qualified firm, and we offered better pricing. So, we thank you again for the opportunity, and I hope you will move forward to a firm tonight, and we look forward to working with you.
Good evening. My name's Marty Stathfeld. I see that county castle of
I see that county council has left. Are there other attorneys up here?
I'm sorry, but you need to stay here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm 56 Livingston Avenue, Roseland, New Jersey. So, I see the county council has left. Is there another council here, or?
Yes.
So, I, well, I'd like to, I'd like to say, I have, I literally have been here for 14 years, and 14 years ago, I don't know if anybody else has been here for 14 years, I was in a similar situation, and where there was, there was a conflict between two insurance firms. And in 14 years ago, somebody did the right thing on the freeholder board and saved the county a lot of money. So, I'm hoping the same thing happens now, but my question for the counselor is that, is it a conflict of interest to represent the county for public relations and at the same time be their insurance broker? Because if you represent the county as an insurance broker, there might be, there might at times be a question of you, the people sitting on the freeholder board. So, the person that's representing you to the press or to anybody is actually the person that has to defend themselves at the same time. So, it seems to me that's a conflict. And so, before anybody votes on this, I would hope that council would look to see if there is a conflict. I apologize for this awkward situation that's occurred. I don't agree with our competitors' comment of their being qualified. They don't represent any other counties in the state of New Jersey. We represent many. You have an $80 million spent, $80 million. I think it's imperative that you think about taxpayer dollars and for a firm that represents many, many counties, you're one of the top three or four largest counties in the state. So, thank you very much.
Freeholders, after, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaBour, Deputy Director James, Director Lizarra.
Director, my name is review, just over director, Keith Furlong is now an employee of Passaic County. Administrator CFO and myself reviewed the proposals. We have a new offering respondents. The administrative memorandum is in your agenda packets. We were recommending Fairview Associates for their qualifications and the class. Do you have any other questions?
No. Just also, that implies that the members of the administration applying to the agreement and be agreed with the recommendation of the administrator.
Have a motion to accept the resolutions consent agenda, K1 through K30. Duffy.
And LaBour.
And LaBour.
Freeholders, after.
I will, yes, all accept K43.
14, 15. Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
LaBour.
Yes.
Deputy Director James, Director Lizarra.
Yes. Have a motion to remove the personnel adjournment. Who was that?
Freeholders, after, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaBour, Deputy Director James, Director Lizarra.
Have a motion to move the bills.
Freeholders, after, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaBour, Deputy Director James, Director Lizarra.
Have a motion to remove certification of payment.
Freeholders, after, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaBour, Deputy Director James, Director Lizarra.
Have a motion to move the bills.
Freeholders, after, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaBour, Deputy Director James, Director Lizarra.
Have a motion to remove certification of payment.
Freeholders, after, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaBour, Deputy Director James, Director Lizarra.
We're in receipt of your mental records.
Received the file.
Have a motion to adjourn.
Four, eight adjourns. Steve, how many meetings was this for you?
Uh, probably around 600.
Congratulations again.
Congratulations.
See you in June, Steve.
Who was, is maybe, James, and who seconds it?
Freeholders, after, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaBour, Deputy Director James, Director Lizarra.
Yes. Thank you all.